You ready? All right. I'd like to call this meeting of your North City Council order, November 17, 2014. All of us, please call and roll.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cos?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Here.
Mr. Raff?
Here.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Here. We have nine here, and I think Mr. Guthrie may be coming, so we'll kind of hold off on that for now. Next, we have the invocation by Mrs. Floyd, former by the pledge of allegiance. Please drop.
Please bow your heads and thank you. Almighty God, we thank you that we live in a free country where we can read together and make those decisions necessary for our citizens. We ask that in this exceptionally cold weather for this time of year, that you be with our city workers who are out cleaning the streets overnight and will have additional work to do, I'm sure. We ask that you be with those people who have problems having enough heat in their home, and particularly be with those of our citizens who are homeless. We'd like to thank those things that don't exist anymore, but we know they do. So please be with these citizens. We ask those to move on.
Please come in. What?
I believe this is due by the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia and its stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Next on the agenda tonight, we have August, the time the council will discuss anything that may be on the agenda this evening. Do we have anything?
I have a motion to give Mr. Guthrie, he may still be here. I've not called him yet.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second. Mr. Marmee? favor, say the part of saying aye. Close sign. That passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from November 3, 2014, for council. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Raff. All in favor, say the part of saying aye. Close sign. That passes. Tonight, under appointments, Mayor Hall has appointed, actually reappointed, City of North Service Director David Rhodes and City of North Development Director Mark Mader to the North CIC, Community Improvement Corporation, known as the North Development Partners. Their term will begin January 1, 2015, and expire January 31, 2017. Once again, this is just a reappointment with these two. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sign. That passes. Thank you. Tonight, reports of standing committees, we have three: one from finance, one from service, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, we have two reports of city officials this evening: one from Stephen Johnson, our auditor, our operating report for appearing ending October 31, 2014, and one from Barb Jones, our city tax administrator, making tax collection reports ending October 31, 2014. Also, without objection, those will be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have three: one from the Ohio EPA, one from Paul Moran, history of the Veterans Day, and the other from Ohio Division of Liquor Control, a new letter permit request for Donald Sues pizza. And those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There's two times this evening when citizens can speak: one is now and one is after the legislation. Basically, this is not a debate with council. We'd just like you to come up if you would, and just give us your name and address, and make a brief comment. You will be polite, and I'm going to make sure you are treated politely.
Notation.
First, we have?
Rhonda Loomis, 870 West Church Street. The first part of this was a personal statement from Mr. Guthrie, and I'm still going to read that, and he can read it in a minute or watch it on the video. "I belong to a club. If I were the only member, it would be fine with me. I lost my daughter six years ago this month to a long horrific battle with go-go dystrophy." Dr. Guthrie's here tonight. "I send my heartfelt best to Lori Guthrie, whom I knew through my own little girl. Our daughters would be the same age. My husband parked cars this weekend for the event held at the Davis Shea House to help defray costs for Lori's family during this time, and the community turnout was amazing, which is what we should always do for our fellow men. So I would say to Mr. Guthrie, if he were here, God's peace fill you, his love sustain you, and his healing he in such little cares. With that said, it is the city's business that this meeting is all about. Time to refocus on what is important to taxpayers. I have here, and I'm going to enter for public record, one copy of the history of the signed fabricator clerk type's position. The difficulty to steer administration was there was no such position to compare it to, or so was discovered during a citywide wage survey. You have before you a creatively created position. The history I'm sharing is in the words of the one that holds that position now. What you will read in her own words is that it was created and intentionally bid at a lower rate of pay so that it would not be a job that many of any other city employees applied for. Another bit of history: I applied for it. I was a brand-new, part-time water office employee who was also brand-new to any union. It was a full-time job, so regardless of pay, I was interested. I then learned that it was predetermined who was getting the signed fabricator/clerk type's position, along with a union lesson that no part-time can bid until all full-time have had their shot. The signed fabricator position was eventually raised to a pay grade 30 from a 27 in 1999, paid retroactively from 1998. Be not mistaken, there is no fear or uncomfortable in asking, demanding, and filing for pay increases. All the records that I have in this packet bear witness to that. So I'm going to ask you to please review also why the words "signed fabricator" are still in this description. For additional information on why I ask that question, I will submit to each of you the email sent, just as I was leaving the fourth ward seat, describing in detail how little sign fabricating is done and why. Again, this is the position holder's word, not mine. For the more, someone is handling the clerical work of the impound lot now. Have you spoken with this employee? Did this employee receive more money? Do your homework before debating the merits of the administration's attempt to restructure and make efficiencies in the services I paid for, not based on who will hold the position. I believe when asking employees would come forth that there weren't such a ridiculous anxiety for doing so. I did make up my mind last year, however, that I was done helping any individuals that call on me, whether union or non-union. So I'm not here for anyone, but I am here as a taxpayer who happens to have a history as an employee and as part of this particular union. Last week, we witnessed a legislator negotiate for a union as if he were an administrator. If some HR experience comment equates to an appointment to fill an HR position at ODOT District 5 that only lasts as long as the governor is of the same party affiliation, I would be willing to bet that a Republican who worked for Kasich's campaign is sitting in the position now, perhaps no more or less qualified, just another ugly side of politics. The personnel committee ended by cutting a newly created union position salary by five steps to allegedly appease the union president. The union leader was asked by the legislator, "Would you be opposed to passing this on to full council if..." and the rate was cut five steps. The union employee who would have been promoted to that position watched the council member and their president reduce the pay for a higher responsibility job. The snow season is upon us, and yet we argue, file, dismiss, and cost the city money and time and resources. This taxpayer believes you have more important fights to fight than argue the administration's request to reorganize with the law director's guidance that meets the CVA. Let the union do what they will do. House Bill 5 is the most detrimental bill on our state legislature's table right now. That demands your attention. That demands your unity. If that goes astray, you will not have to worry about many positions. The city will be hit too hard. That should be your focus. We have 14 less police officers than is allotted and/or have budgeted for. That demands your attention. It is one of the very basics we pay for. The police department is working bare bones in personnel, less of a raise, and less time off than their safety peers. How aware are you that if the more police department had not been training on the day that Officer Conley had been shot, resulting in extra officers available, that that situation could have turned out a whole lot differently? Last week, while one legislator admonished a cabinet member, this taxpayer was admonishing the legislator for the collusion that was the elephant in the room. Time to get refocused on the issues that affect the taxpayers directly, not positions and position holders. The administration will handle that. So here is emails of everybody that she sent you on their way out the door. And Mr. Ralletta is over. And this is for the public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Loomis. For anyone else who would like to speak during this first section of citizens' comments?
My name is Green Lovina, and I live at 238 Park Trail Drive. This is about River Road, getting the permit to build more parking centers and more housing. I don't know if you've ever traveled on that road, but trying to get onto River Road, you have cars left at the center, the traffic's horrible, and it's getting worse and worse as more homes go in. And it's just going to get to the point where they're going to need to put streetlights in, and it's going to need to be patrolled more by police officers because people are on stop signs. It's just getting to the point where it's very dangerous. The other thing is, is when you put apartments in, you get a lot of people that have the attitude that they're living there temporarily. And so if they really... The attitude is a little bit different. When we lived in Gehanna, we had apartments go below us and above us. We had a basketball hoop in our driveway. The neighborhood kids used to come over and ask if they could use it, and I would move the cars out of the driveway. Right after they put the apartments in, strange kids were playing basketball out of our house while our car was parked under the basketball hoop. They didn't care. We had our cars broken into several times. I just got to the point where we had to move away. Your crime rate's going to increase, you're going to have traffic increase, you're going to have a lot of problems in that area. I don't know if they've considered that, and are considering hiring more police officers to patrol that area. But I've seen children on bicycles almost hit by people running stop signs. I've called and complained about it. It's just getting to the point where the traffic is already ridiculous, and by increasing it, it's only going to make it disastrous. You're going to have to widen roads, you're going to have to put streetlights in, you're going to have to do all kinds of stuff. You know, the reason why we moved out there, we moved out there in 2000, we were the fourth house in the subdivision. And we've just seen everything change. All the things we liked about the area have changed. And, you know, I understand people have to live somewhere, but it is getting to the point where it's just, it's going to devalue the homes that are there. It's just not going to be the place it was. You know, is it necessary to put apartments there? We have apartments all over the place. But, you know, to turn a country area, a rural area like that, with beautiful hills and stuff, and in Contamia with a bunch of buildings and a bunch of traffic, I just can't see it. So I hope they look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Here's my understanding, I know there's some butts out here for this river road development. Here's my understanding about where we'd work to make sure everybody is on the same page, and did correctly, if I'm wrong. Tomorrow night, the planning commission at 6 o'clock tomorrow night, the service director will read his decision on this. He will either accept the zoning change, he'll deny the zoning change, or he may table up to do something different, or to talk about it. So that's tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, and then the planning commission will vote on what the service director brings forward, whether to accept that or deny. So that's tomorrow at 6. After that, if he does accept it or deny, it will come to council, and that will be two weeks. Council would then have a public hearing, and then vote on the zoning. So it's not anywhere close to being over yet, but the next step will be tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, and I would really encourage you all to come and hear that, and then you'll know about where you are a little more. So is there anyone else who would like to speak during this section of public comments? Yes, or citizens' comments, I'm sorry. Just give your name and address for the record, we appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Jean from Rhine. My address is 2281 River Road. I've owned the house for 25 years, so I've been a long-term resident. I'd like to thank those folks that have come up to us to participate in this situation, and I hope that if anybody else gets to speak, that you folks do take them with consideration, their thoughts and feelings. We realize also that there's 80 acres on the south side that's not ready to be developed. There's issues with that, I mean, with more traffic and everything. That will be our second major development in that area, but we would hope that they would be considering also in their plans, like Park Trails was. That being said, 24 rental units on 6 acres is not really the direction we feel we might go as a community. The 68 units currently being built, nothing can be done about that, but by allowing Redwood to continue to build their Phase 2, that would just allow other people to come in and continue, maybe doing apartments also. I know that people not living in that area don't believe that we have a traffic issue, but we really do during rush hours. 21 years ago, my daughter was hit on that road by a truck. And when that happened, I saw my wife flash in front of me. And the traffic's just, can be very horrid, and there's no berms, nothing to help. We know that there's going to be children living in these apartments that are being built currently. Grand Bill's figuring there's going to be 30 to 50 kids. Where are they going to ride their bikes? You know, where are they going to be safe? How are they going to get to, you know, the bike path, the bike path community? Who's going to make sure they're safe? You know, I had 5 acres out there, but my kids still want to ride on the road. But anyhow, if you do the math, if they develop out there with all the land and all the top of it, we could have 1,200-plus cars extra on that road, not even considering what's already there. I just feel that a lot of things need to be considered before the zoning is changed, like traffic study, what future development we want as a community, the road, you know, are we going to have berms, turn lanes, traffic signs, something? Will we be able to make it safe for people to ride to the bike path, you know, the kids and the families? And we would like to see developments that will increase our home values, not hinder them. So in seeing that, I hope you take us into consideration, our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with this first section of citizens' comments?
My name's Tom Allen, I'm a resident of Park Trails. I'd also like to address the development of River Road. I think largely our concern, and the concern of people who are living in my neighborhood as well, is that we want to know what the future development of this area is going to ultimately be. I know that there's a preference of use of the property versus disuse of the property, and we understand that there's going to be some development that happens in the area. But ultimately, we would like to see where all this is going, as some of the property becomes zoned for multifamily use or higher-density use. I think there's going to be more arguments to say, or, you know, neighboring properties are going to say, "Why can't they also use their property for multifamily or high-density use as well?" And so, you know, having moved into a community thinking that we were moving into a residential area, we would like to see the future development maintain and stay as a single-family residential area versus becoming a higher-density area. So I do understand that this is going to be brought up at the zoning meeting tomorrow. It's also my understanding that there's not an opportunity for public comment during that as well. So, thank you for your comment. I missed your address, I'm sorry. It's 346 Haydings Valley. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Allison Sergio at 2928 River Road. I hear you say tonight that we've already discussed this situation, but like the gentleman before me said, there's not one for the conversation tomorrow. So it is my hope that you listen to us tonight, and each and every one of us, because we do have a say, we are your constituents, we do vote for you. And it is our wish, and we think we've been, I feel like I'm not being heard, that this development be reconsidered. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the legislation. Again, there's one of those sections of citizens' comments after the legislation this evening. Next, we have ordinances on the second reading, 14-37.
Orders 14-37 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, and Mr. Marmee, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of North Division of Water and wastewater by prohibiting classification of electro-mechanical technicians at the water treatment plant and setting the compensation therefore and abolish the one, water plant operator position.
Is this something I said? You've heard the second reading of 14-37, where's your wish?
Congratulations. I'm hyped. Congratulations. Order is 14-37.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Cos. Is there any discussion on 14-37?
There's something, what the water department needs, I think, because things have gotten more technical than they have been in the past.
Any other discussion? Seeing that, all of us, please call and roll, vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes. 14-37, that's passed. Nine zero. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 14-38.
Ordinance 14-38 by Mrs. Floyd and Mr. Cos, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the Department of Public Service, Division of Street Maintenance, and Traffic Control by combining the two departments and creating one additional pro leader, senior, and one signed fabricator impound clerk, one assistant street traffic superintendent, and abolish one clerk type as signed fabricator, one traffic control operations manager, and one street maintenance operations manager.
14-38 will be held for a second reading in two weeks. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 14-87.
Resolution 14-87 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
You've heard the second reading of 14-87, what is your wish?
Mr. Blake? Move to adopt 14-87.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-87? See none, all of us, please call and roll, vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes. 14-87 passes, nine zero. Next, resolutions on the first reading, 14-88.
Resolution 14-88 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
14-88, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move away the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd. Your reason, Mr. Blake?
There's some council services that the Department of State wants to enter into as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. All of us, please call and roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes. Second reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt 14-88.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-88? See none, all of us, please call and roll, vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes. 14-88 has passed, nine zero. Next, on the first reading, we have 14-89.
Resolution 14-89 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and service director of the City of North to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Franklin County Board of Commissioners for the fiscal year 2014 Urban Area Security Initiative awards from the Columbus Urban Area Homeland Security Advisory Committee.
14-89, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move away the two-day reading rule on 14-89.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake?
It was requested by Ms. Gilchrist that we trade it as soon as possible to enter into the agreement, to get some money for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. All of us, please call and roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes. The two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt 14-89.
Motion by Mr. Blake to adopt, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-89? See none, all of us, please call and roll, vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Ralletta?
Yes. 14-89 passes, nine zero. Next, on the first reading, we have 14-90.
Resolution 14-90 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Marmee, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
14-90 will be held for two weeks, our next council meeting, and finally, tonight, we have 14-91.
Resolution 14-91 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Blake, a resolution approving and ratifying an updated solid waste management plan.
14-90 will be held for two weeks, for our next council meeting. And that concludes the legislation this evening. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. I see most of our group, I'm going to say the first time is left, so I guess everyone will be talking again. Is anyone else who wants to speak?
Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth Street. I have a number of items here. Last week, I visited around the Mount City Old Lake area. I mean, yeah, Mount City Old Lake is a beautiful park, old park, but the area around it is just horrible. The sidewalk on Runchain Hall Street from second to the bridge is covered up with dirt and grass. The area right behind Mount City is in horrible condition. The playground is covered in black weeds, high grass. There's a pile of trash around the utility floor. I'm enjoying that down there. And I'm, who's in charge of it, I hope it can be brought back to life. It's just horrible. Also, I'd like to mention that we'd like to see brick alleys stored downtown, and that will save on using pavement of any sort, like patching or just keep our brick alleys, keep the brick. We've got to save whatever cost you count on pavements, like pay budget and all. And I like, you know, I saw on the pay board getting a subway downtown, which is a plus, but also I'd see more retail like that come in. You know, Wood's Frozen Custard, and very cool. You don't have no electric place like that downtown. A&W Restaurant, Crash Store and other things, you know. I don't see why we can't have a downtown shopping center. Downtown to shop, and they have one. I mean, why can't we? We've got land to have a shopping center downtown. It would be a real big plus in a lot of ways to have a downtown shopping center. Also, I'd like to see the city scrap all these parking lots that they've got in their plans and use that pavement for the most needed streets in the city. Not even touch them, just leave them where they are, and use that pavement for the most needed streets in our neighborhoods. And that's what I have right now.
Thank you. Dan?
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. Pardon me, I'm extremely tired, sorry. All right. In January of 2009, those of us who had protested the abuses of executive power under George W. Bush during his eight years at the helm were hopeful that the inauguration of President Obama, a constitutional lawyer and vocal opponent of how the so-called war on terror had been conducted up to that point, would begin at least a gradual return to our constitutional principles. By that spring, it became clear that our hopes were premature. The New York Times reported on May 20, 2009, that the president was contemplating the long-term benefits for future presidents of utilizing preventive detention to combat terror. Not only was this new administration not going to stop or slow its way from representative democracy and the rule of law, they were going to contribute to such. If one can justify preventive detention, that is imprisoning someone because they are suspected of being a candidate for criminal activity to address one crime, then why not others? What is to stop the authorities from using preventive detention on a single mother in Irish Straits who just got laid off by a bank in order to curb the threat of her committing a bank robbery? Or how about preventatively detaining all spouses during a painful breakup so as to bar them from possibly going postal on their former significant others? Is this how justice is supposed to work? We have a terrible knack of taking our liberties for granted. Likewise, we are far too comfortable with ignoring the conduct of our politicians, particularly when same-said politicians share the same party identification as we do. This ignorance to the plight of our political system, whether woeful or not, is what has made the ongoing rise of authoritarianism possible here, as it had elsewhere throughout history. Remember that an injustice to any is an injustice to all, and we disregard such in our uncollective peril. This will mark my, this will be, these will be my concluding remarks before council on this topic. Excuse me. However, my crusade in defense of our founding principles is far from over, and I implore all to join me in standing up to demand that Congress assert its responsibility as a check on presidential power and act in accordance with the Constitution to restore the distribution of political power to its proper balance. Going forward, it is critical that we resist the temptation to portray this as a purely partisan issue with President Obama at the center. President Obama is not the problem, nor was his predecessor, which is why the reasoning for congressional action matters more than the result of other individuals removed from office. If President Obama were to be impeached or removed from office today based on, say, the claim that he intentionally boxed or covered up the handling of Benghazi, then that would ultimately do nothing to address the troublesome usurpation of power by the office he holds. Instead, either he or one of his successors must be removed from office based solely on their local participation in the concentration of power into the presidency. Additionally, it must be cited in this indictment that this shift of authority from the many to the one has been contrary to the Constitution, the rule of law, and is a threat to our republic. No, North City Council is not going to change anything with the resolution that our passage has passed, but we mustn't grasp until this imbalance is corrected, because tyranny and democracy cannot coexist. It is incumbent upon all free and loving people to defend these principles, for the declaration of popular sovereignty is an intolerable first step on the path to oppression. So, in closing, I humbly ask you to honor your oath to preserve and protect, preserve and defend our Constitution by taking action on this issue. Thank you.
I give it to you. Do you have anyone else? Can you offer an administration's opinion? I'll go, I'll go. Pass. And I'll go, I'll go. Mayor Hall?
Just want to send thoughts and prayers to the O'Neill family. John J., often known as Jack O'Neill, passed away yesterday, and he's been credited with a lot of development, both commercial and residential, since the early 50s of Lincoln County. You've seen that through Southgate Corporation, they built the first shopping center, I'd say, in this area, certainly. So, well, thoughts and prayers to that family. And that, that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Blake?
Call for a finance committee meeting next Monday, and then also just a reminder that the youth council will be meeting this Thursday at 4:00 here in council chambers at the courthouse.
Mr. Blake? Mr. Bub?
Thank you, Mr. President.